I did. Jack? Get that, get that study done. Let's call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all. Welcome, everyone. It's a lot of people.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are at number four. Resident comments and questions for anything not on our agenda? Anyone? Anyone? Moving forward, presentation and reports. Number six, public hearings. I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
Seconded by Hank. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. Jeff, number nine, new business, environmental assessment worksheet for Lakeview Industries. Jeff, I met you earlier and you said your last name. Don't, uh, Madajek.
Madajek.
Madajek. A lot of consonants in there.
It's not hard to say, but it's hard to read.
You're giving me an out there, aren't you? Chicago boy.
I was told when I spelled it first, I had to spell it before.
This is the first. Alright, so nine point one, get after it Jeff. Thank you.
So hello, my name is Jeff Madajek. I work for Wank Associates and we partnered with the city to complete an environmental assessment worksheet for the Lakeview Industries proposed plastic fabrication facility that's being evaluated by the city. So I partnered with Aaron Smith, the planner, to complete the EAW. So I want to give you a little summary of the project. Lakeview Industries, they operate an existing facility in Chaska. Right now, it's sort of split into two facilities. They have one that's their main production center, which is a property they own, and one facility that's a shipping and warehousing that they rent that space. They are a custom fabrication facility. They take rolled materials, rolled silicone, rubber, or plastic materials, and they use dies or hydrojet cutting procedures to create products that are ordered by their clients. These are used in the medical field, construction industry, agriculture industry, and there are these plastic or rubber gas tickets, weather stripping, things of that nature. So right now, because they have the two facilities, they have decided to explore a new facility that would consolidate their operations. Right now, they have about 95 total employees. They've been operating in Chaska since 1990. The company's been in business for over 40 years. The new site that they've identified is a 42 and a half acre site in the city of Carver that is north of the existing Fleet Farm facility along Levi Griffin Road. This will allow them to consolidate all their operations into one location and also opportunities for expansion and future growth, more competitive business in the marketplace. Right now, they're proposing to construct it in phases. The first phase would be starting in 2019, and the second phase is not exactly scheduled. It'll depend on market conditions and revenue streams by Lakeview Industries, and that would be, in approximately five years, would be Phase Two. So that's just a general overview of what they're proposing. I want to let you know a little bit about the environmental review process. In Minnesota, we have an environmental review state level process. Not all states have it. Under our rules, Minnesota rules, it's governed under Chapter 4410. The way environmental review process usually works is someone who's proposing to develop or build something submits an application to someone. It's a permit, an air permit for the MPCA. In this case, it's a land use or a plat, application to the city. When an application comes in, then the jurisdictional entity in charge of that application reviews the proposed development and determines if environmental review is needed. In this case, so there are some mandatory triggers that would automatically mean a development would have to undergo environmental review. If it was a aggregate mine over 40 acres, that's a mandatory trigger. And so this is a industrial facility, and it's based on the size of facility and where it is going to be located. The Lakeview Industries submitted their concept plan to the city in the summer, July of 2018, and it was reviewed and evaluated. The initial review has determined that the facility did not trigger mandatory environmental review. However, as part of the due diligence for the overall planning process for the facility, the city did undertake environmental review in the form of an EAW. So these are some maps. They show you the overall project site. There's the project location there in red. It's north of 212 and east of County Road 11, just to the north of Levi Griffin Road. And the Fleet Farm facility, the city water tower is also on the same parcel. Carver is, the main part of Carver where we are is to the south, and then city of Chaska would be to the east, and then rural unincorporated to the west. Here's the, this is just a general aerial photo, and this just shows that the facility right now, or the parcel, is the existing agricultural field. There's no development on the site or the parcel that they're proposing. The city water tower is there on the west and the center. So this is the, this is the concept of the development plan that was used for the purposes of the EAW evaluation. It shows what Lakeview is proposing to build over the first two phases. The Phase One building is in the center of there, and then the Phase Two building, the one would be, you know, five or so years in the future is more to the west. There would be new parking areas for shipping and deliveries, and then there would be stormwater management facilities as well. All of Lakeview Industries' processes take place within the building. There are no outside operations that take place. There are no outside storage of materials, as in tanks or raw material storage piles or other things that would be outside. Everything is conducted within the building. The new stormwater facilities there will manage and accommodate stormwater from both the new buildings as well as the parking area. The city is undertaking an extension of Commerce Drive, which is on the eastern border of the facility. That extension of that roadway is a city project, but it will provide an access point to Lakeview Industries. The stormwater from Commerce Drive will be directed to the ponds that are going to be built on the Lakeview Industries' project site. The north half of the site has no plans for development at this time, and it's not part of this review process.
It doesn't like you.
I broke it. This is typical. So, this is the two, these are two excerpts from the different land use plans in the city. The one on the left is the 2030 comprehensive plan, and the one on the right is the land use map for the 2040 comprehensive plan. What this is illustrating is that this area has been targeted or guided towards a commercial or industrial user since these plans were developed, and it's consistent with the city plans for an industrial site to be located at this, this particular parcel. It's in a growth area for the city. The last map here that doesn't also like me is the wetland map. So this is just one of the, I guess I didn't maybe mention this. Within the environmental review process for an EAW, environmental assessment worksheet, there are specific questions that are laid out, and every project has to answer all the questions. If you have more information about air, then that might be a question you spend more time on. If you have more impacts or project-related activities associated with wetlands, then you talk about that for more in your particular document. So, but whenever you do an EAW, you have to go through the entire form and fill out all the questions. So one of the area resource topics that's discussed is wetlands. These are some of the wetlands that are on the project site. There would be approximately 1.3 acres of wetlands impacted by the development of the Lakeview Industries' facility. About 0.35 of those would be for the first phase, and the other 0.85 would be in the second phase in the future. There would be an additional 0.65 acres of wetland impacts for the development of Commerce Drive. Though, the Commerce Drive development and wetland is part of a separate process. It's a permitting that's being undertaken by the city, but it was mentioned within the EAW just to show that they were coordinated between the two. All the wetland impacts are going to be, proposed to be mitigated through purchase of banking credits. So some of the details, like I mentioned, from the overall development. The site has been guided and planned for an industrial user, so it's consistent with city plans for the area. They're proposing to increase in the next five years from approximately 95 to 100 workers they have now. They'd be adding another 25 to 30 workers, so that would increase the amount of workers driving to and from the site. The facility will be served by utilities from the city. The city already has existing water and sewer service in Levi Griffin Road, and it does have the capacity to accommodate the needs of the Lakeview Industries' facility. Commerce Drive is a planned city project that will provide access to the development, but also to future development in the area, and that's a city project. There will be new stormwater management features. The stormwater features include a combination of ponds for volume and rate control, a filtration bench which provides water quality treatment, and then a reuse irrigation system to reduce volume. The stormwater from Commerce Drive will also be directed to one of the ponds. The pond, or the stormwater plan is reviewed by the Carver County Water Management System as part of the process for the facility. I mentioned that wetland impacts would be mitigated through banking credits, and that the review in the EAW found that there were, most of the resource topics, there were no issues of concern, such as items like noise, air quality, sensitive species, historic resources, hazardous materials. Nothing of significance was evaluated or identified within the process. So the overall EAW process is, which is where we are, at the, sort of the end of it today. The EAW has to be submitted to the Environmental Quality Board. They're the entity in Minnesota that governs the environmental review process. It was submitted the week of September 24th. It was actually then mailed out to, there's a required number of parties that all EAWs have to be sent to by EQB Distribution List. That was done on the 27th of September. There is required 30-day public comment period as part of the EAW process. That started on October 1st and concluded on October 31st. During that time, there has to be a press release that the EAW is available to people, and they know they can review it. That press release was in the Chaska Herald on October 4th. During the 30-day public comment period, the EAW was available at City Hall, and it was also available on the city website for people to download. And then during the comment period, there were comments received from one resident and then four agencies. Most of the comments were informational requests in nature, either mostly items of clarification about the proposed project. There were no concerns raised for, or requests for additional analysis. And as part of the EAW process, a record of decision must be prepared by the city, which has been gone, and it documents everything that I just described for you that went on during the environmental review process, and the decisions that can be made going forward. And the record of decision has been pulled together and has evaluated that all the project impacts can either be addressed through the mitigation that's already proposed, or that can be dealt with under existing permitting programs. That's it for me.
You're done. It just stopped.
So, we'll open it up to questions, both, I'd like to first have questions from the council, and then if there's anybody in the audience that may have a question. Any questions from the council?
You said that there were a few questions after you submitted it, from agencies?
Yes, sir.
But there was nothing, was there anything from residents?
There was one resident who commented.
Okay, and the rest were just?
The DNR sent in a letter. So there's a required number of entities that you send it out to all the time. So the letters were sent in from the entities by the DNR, Carver County Water Management Organization, Minnesota Department of Transportation, and Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Those are the four.
Okay, and they just had?
Yep.
Questions were pretty much self-explanatory?
Yeah, like Carver County mentioned that if the export, the excess soil was exported out of the facility, you might need a separate permit from the county that needed to be identified, so we answered that.
They're covering their costs.
The, yeah, the MPCA had a question regarding the stormwater planning. Minnesota Department of Transportation wanted to make sure that if the drainage went direct to MinDOT right-of-way or infringed on MinDOT right-of-way, there would be coordination with them. So, those were the nature of the comments from the agencies. The DNR basically just concurred with the analysis and noticed that if, if you do more than 10,000 gallons a day of dewatering, even if it's temporary for a construction project, that would require a water appropriation permit, so they noted that. But it was, those were the most of the nature of the comments.
Okay, thank you.
So the idea behind an EAW is to find out if you need to take the next step, which is basically finding significant environmental impacts, and did you see any of that?
Uh, no, sir, not in the evaluation of this proposed action.
Any other questions? I would like to thank Jeff. You got kind of dragged in here at the last minute, and your firm did a very nice job of coming in and doing everything that was asked of you. So greatly appreciated. We do have a motion in front of us. If anyone has any questions or comments or procedural questions for Larry or Aaron.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 156-18, adopting the findings of fact, conclusion, and record of decision related to Lakeview Industries.
There's a motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hank. There's a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions, concerns? Congrats, boys. Here we go. Uh, there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You guys, this has been a great, long process, and I know this was an extra step, but I really appreciate your patience and really want to welcome you aboard.
For clarification, there are quite a few more Lakeview steps tonight, so you'll.
There's more, but we love these guys at this point. Larry, I can't say that, can I? I did. Alright, let's move on to the, oh, Brent Merrick, Jonathan Carver Parkway, Cassau 11 study. Jack? Jack, come on up.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. In, as part of the 2015 and 16 goal sitting session, the city council identified a need to look at the Cassau 11, Jonathan Carver Parkway corridor for long-term planning needs. We started a conversation with Carver County to look at that. We developed a RFP for the process, and in May of 2017, the city council entered into a joint powers agreement to conduct that study with Carver County. WSB was selected as the consultant to complete that study. The study's goals were to use a combination of analytics, stakeholder input, and direction from policymakers to plan for future intersection development, lane configurations, and other design elements along Cassau 11 and Jonathan Carver Parkway. The JPA stipulates a cost share on a 50-50 basis between the city and the county. The city share is just a shade under $80,000. The city was given three years within the JPA to pay that balance off. As a part of the study, as we've been moving through it, there was an issue related to the corridor study as relates to the regional traffic models. We have Jack Corkle with WSB to discuss that issue. There is a proposed scope change and costs associated with that of around $15,000, and there's a proposed JPA amendment for the city council to consider. Before I dig into the details of that, I'll turn it over to Jack Corkle with WSB to explain the regional traffic model and provide a brief update on the corridor study to date.
Thank you, Brent. So, we had hoped to have a draft plan by this time. We are not there. There's several reasons for that. The base reason for not getting there is the regional travel forecast model. So I spoke to you earlier this summer, provided an update, maybe it was late spring, trying to explain the challenges that we, the county, and the Met Council are having with the regional travel forecast model. It hasn't been doing a good job of projecting future traffic volumes the way they had anticipated. So we had to end up doing some extra coordination and some extra work to try to fix things as best we could. It became more problematic, and we had to do some additional analysis with the city. We sat down with planning staff and engineering staff and talked about the timing and phasing of development, and tried some different ways to figure out the timing of development and the intensity of the development. So as an example to help put things in context, what is going to be the future Monroe Drive or Avenue? I apologize, I'm going to get that wrong. Drive, thank you. The regional model had predicted that there would be 700 cars or 700 vehicles using that roadway by the year 2040. That's not a good number. It's not a realistic number of the amount of traffic that we're going to have on that roadway. You already have proposed developments coming in that are going to consume or subsume most of that traffic. And so we needed to figure out how to make the numbers work and get something that was going to be more reflective of the development that we thought was coming forward. The county recognized that there have been some challenges with the regional travel forecast model, and asked us to change the approach and to do some different analyses. So we put together a scope of work that would help identify some of the future numbers. The county is going through a separate process with its regional model, but they are not going to be done with that for like another four months, and so that would delay our study even further. And the county and the city rightfully didn't want to cause more delays on that, so we had to come up with a different process for addressing it. So, we do, are looking at some different traffic forecasts based on some different scenarios. The county asked to look at two different scenarios, what we think will happen by 2040, and then a second sort of unconstrained version that says, okay, what if growth or development happens faster or more intensive than we had anticipate? Or a full build-out at some point in time? What, what does that say in terms of traffic? Or what does that say when things start to break down and additional improvements may be needed beyond the 20-year planning horizon? So we put together an additional scope of work to answer some of those questions, to help move the study forward and to address the shortcomings of the existing regional model. That additional scope of work is a little under $31,000. You can see in the pocket, it's $30,740 that would be split between the two agencies. Couple of other reasons for the delay in the corridor study, just to kind of give you a general overall update. I'm sure you're aware of a number of developments that have been coming in along the future Monroe. We have the Meridian Fields development, as well as the potential developments along the United Properties. So we've been taking a step back, trying to review those developments on behalf of the county, and in terms of how that would impact the corridor and some of the timing of the activities that had been anticipated. And the county has really asked us pretty much to get close to some more firm design concepts and looking at right-of-way impacts and kind of nailing down today, because of the timing of the developments, what's going to be needed at those intersections. So efforts for the last couple of months have been focused on answering those questions in the northern half of the corridor and looking at some of the traffic in that area. So we anticipate coming to the public, I would say after the first of the year, comments of not wanting to have meetings during the holiday season, public open houses. You make that a little bit challenging. So we would look at, after the first of the year, coming to an open house meeting showing the different concepts. We have been able to move forward a few things beyond the traffic to this date. We've got some concepts for some of the landscaping along the corridor, continuing with some of the motifs that were established on Levi Griffin to date, that are in place to date. We've got some general on the number of traffic lanes that we think that we're going to need north and south of Dalgren Road. We are looking at a four-lane facility with some long-turn lanes and dedicated left and right-turn lanes at key intersections along the corridor as we head towards the north. Long-term, if, terms of some of the, beyond what's 2040, we're going to have to look at some potential changes, maybe to the interchange, and looking at what some of those impacts could be and how to plan for those. To the south, generally speaking, at this point, we think we can do, in at least the next 20 years, a three-lane roadway, which is very similar to what's there today, potentially extending it all the way down to the southern intersection of where Jonathan Carver Parkway kind of takes the left down towards the river crossing towards, towards the city of Jordan. So that's where we are to date, and a summary of how we got there.
Could you repeat that last part about the city of Jordan?
So, County Road 11 takes a turn, or you can go down towards the city of Jordan. So at that intersection is, is where we're looking at continuing the three-lane all the way to, to that spot.
Any questions, comments?
Do we have any traffic counts yet?
We've done a number of counts. We started in the fall, just before the elementary school opened. So we do have counts on the existing corridor prior to then. At this point, those are our most recent that I think we have.
So I, I mean, I, this sounds exactly like the last time you were here.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds exactly the same. And I just have a couple of questions. Is JCP part of the county turnback program?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Because I think there's some issues there with the number 5,000. But, so, we, we have all these numbers. Met Council, we, this is what you said last time. We don't trust their numbers. They're wrong. We've been talking about development along this corridor for a long time, along Monroe Drive and everything else. We obviously know 700 isn't right.
Yep.
Now that counties come to you and asked, put together your own traffic numbers.
Yep.
So what have we been doing for the last six months?
So we've been waiting for the county to approve the authorization to move forward with this. We put a proposal in front of the county in May of this year to do the additional work. We were given authorization in September. We've also been addressing the development plans with Meridian Fields and getting those intersections worked out. So we've been looking at some of the traffic numbers produced specifically for Meridian Fields and putting numbers together to help identify the footprint of what that intersection needs to be ultimately, so that the development can cite its ponds, so it can cite its entrance points. We looked at whether or not a write-in, write-out was needed off of Jonathan Carver Parkway, as well as an additional write-in off of Monroe prior to the first full intersection.
It's kind of fun to say. Monroe Drive. Alright, so we're back at square one. Here's the bottom line. You need to get paid. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, that's where we're at.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Should we approve this add-on? How long till this study is done?
So we're working with the city and the county to finalize when that will be. We'd like to have our open house in January. We could probably have something ready in December, but we were told, no, to wait until January to have an open house. Following that.
By the county?
By the city.
By the city too? Okay.
But the work will be completely done by then?
It won't be completely done. We'll have to take feedback from the public. Okay. And make final recommendations. So ideally, I would like to be done by March.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Did you know you were going to get attacked?
I'm not attacking. That's not a attack. That's a fair question. It's a fair, it's a completely fair question.
Alright, so in essence, we need to get you some dough, so that... Hey, wait a second. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go. Sorry.
I just, so this addition, the $30,740, is this money for time that's already available hours? Or is this work that still yet has to be done?
Part of it has started. The county gave us authorization to proceed.
County's part.
Yep. Some of it is not done yet.
Okay, and? And, kinda just to tag on to Cindy's question, if you're ready to show something potentially as early as December, you're about, aside from the public feedback and incorporating that in, you're about 90, 95% done? You have the numbers you need now?
In terms of our numbers, we're gonna need to finalize them in November. So by the end of the month, that would be, we'd have agreement between the city, the county, and WSB on what those forecast volumes are. We've got our concepts for our landscaping generally flushed out. We've got to, once we know what those final numbers are, one of the bigger pieces that's left to do, so I wouldn't say that we're 90% done with the project, is to develop an implementation plan. And what that implementation plan will do, we'll look at in the next five years, what types of improvements are needed, in the next 10 years, what types of improvements are needed, what's gonna trigger different improvements at different stages in the process. Some of that is a little bit of horse trading. Sometimes you can get more bang for your buck if you do one thing a little bit earlier, even though you might not need it further to the south, but it helps set the stage for that. So that's gonna be some of the discussion back and forth that's gonna have to occur once the improvements are identified. So that's our probably biggest piece left that we haven't started yet.
Okay. And then I also had a question. You talked about how the additional development was part of the reason for the delay.
Mm-hmm.
How, so it's my understanding that not only the development that's taking place right now, our 500 home starts, but also the additional, not even on our radar yet, was gonna be kind of incorporated into this traffic study. So help me understand the development that we're anticipating, how that's putting us behind.
So the development, it's the timing of things, right? So we can say that we need a four-lane or a six-lane facility, you're gonna have to have some turn lanes, et cetera. The county, as part of the development that's been coming in, wants to know, how long should those turn lanes be? How many do you need a left and a right turn lane? And a corridor study generally takes, I'm not gonna say a 50,000-foot view, but it's kind of at that, you know, 30, 20,000-foot view. Preliminary and final design gets down into your, how long your lane, your turn lane should be, how many, and how exactly you're gonna lay it out, what your exact right-of-way acquisition needs to be. And the county's asked us to do some of those activities in this location. That takes more time than the 30,000, 50,000-foot view, and so that's part of the reason for the delay. And the other reason is that we were over seven months behind in getting the travel forecasting data from the county, so...
And now you're gonna make them up anyway.
Educated engineering, yes.
Yes, I got it. Educated engineering, E squared. Is that it? Mock.
Okay. So a lot of what we've been talking about is the northern section of the project. When we look at the southern section, where it ends just past the 11 road that goes through Jordan. So if you look at the traffic patterns during the morning commute and the evening commute, they're really heavy coming from Jordan.
Yep.
Is it being taken into consideration what growth might be coming from that?
Yes.
From Jordan Scott County that's gonna also be using that?
Yes.
And how do you address that?
Yep. So that's where, again, we look at the future, taking some of the stuff from the regional model, understanding some of that's not correct, looking at growth factors that we're seeing within the city of Carver, understanding the growth, overall growth within Carver County itself, in the more rural areas, and applying factors to increase the volumes. So the challenge with Jonathan Carver Parkway, as we're looking at some of the operations, when we're looking at, do we need dual left-turn lanes? Do we need dual right-turn lanes at some of the ramp, you know, at the ramp? The question becomes, is, because it's very directional right now. It clearly in the morning, a vast majority of the traffic is going northbound. In the evening, it's the exact opposite. And that's one of the challenges, is that your peak periods, do you design for your peak periods to flow completely free or not? And the answer is, we can't get there unless we would probably be looking at a six-lane facility out there, you know, and having no congestion, which I don't think is probably desirable by the residents or the community as a whole. You know, you're potentially taking out a whole row of houses along portions of the corridor when you start looking at things like that.
So how do you, if we found that our projections were off, how do you feel about the Scott County projections?
So it's a regional model problem, period. I would say travel forecasting is never an exact science. Some of the challenges that have been, I think, in particular, is the last time that everybody did their comprehensive plans, everybody was in high-growth mode. It was right before the economy tanked. And when people were doing their comprehensive plans at that time and indicating all of this development and this all high-intensity development, or more intense development, if you look at the difference between Carver's plan from 2030 and 2040, it's significantly different. The challenge is, is people have seen those numbers from the 2030 plans that had high numbers and high volumes, so everybody's kinda second-guessing themselves in terms of why, you know, this worst-case scenario. And that's why the county has asked us to look at a more high-growth scenario, to try to see, okay, what happens if things are off? And what are the impacts if traffic is higher or there's more development that occurs? So it's a check.
Any more questions? Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt an amendment to the joint powers agreement with Carver County for completion of the Jonathan Carver Parkway corridor study at a cost not to exceed an additional $15,370.
So a motion made by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Hank. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Comments? Questions?
Thank you for your time.
Pam, Pam. So a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jack. You did well, we were easy.
No, it's fair questions.
All right, Mr. Merrick, moving forward, where am I here? Yeah, it's Audiovisual 9.3, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Saving paper. Vicki puts it on both sides, so that we only use one piece of paper, and then she writes me notes on here. She's the best.
As a part of the Broadway City Hall project, staff's been working on audiovisual equipment proposals, or soliciting those proposals for the project. So this would include various monitors, related to cabling, screens, projectors, control equipment, et cetera. I've listed those out in the overview. There's also a summary of the proposal from Marco. We received a proposal from Marco and EPA. Marco's proposal was for $73,825.25. As a part of the, kind of the broader scope of the technology area, the city budgeted $175,000 as a part of the project, including the AV equipment. We're at about $127,000 with the security system and cameras pending, so at this point, we should be well under our ceiling budget of $175,000 in the technology area for the building project. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Comments? That's awesome, by the way.
Yeah.
I had the opportunity to talk to a few members of the team that were talking about some really cool aspects of it. Does that include, like, the white noise part? It does? Awesome.
That's furniture.
Pardon me?
That will be included in the furniture budget.
But you're including that? Okay, good. All right. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to accept a proposal for AV equipment for the Broadway City Hall project from Marco for $73,825.25.
Motion by Councilmember Hank.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward here, 9.4, preliminary plat and zoning applications for Lakeview Industries. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have two land use applications we're reviewing related to Lakeview. First will be the rezoning, second is preliminary plat. On the screen, there's an updated rendering that I don't think the council has seen quite yet, so this was provided recently by the Lakeview team, so a good idea of what the building will look like at full construction. So where we are in the process tonight, the council has previously reviewed the concept plan. That was in August, on August 6, 2018. The preliminary plat was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their August 30 meeting. They held the required public hearing. So tonight, the city council's reviewing the preliminary plat and rezoning. So Jeff did a really nice overview in the EAW process about Lakeview Industries, so I will do it again. Lakeview is currently in the city of Chaska, they've been there for over 30 years. They fabricate flexible components, including gaskets, die cuts, molded rubber parts, extrusions, and weather stripping, and they serve a variety of markets, including medical, recreation, agricultural construction. And big-name customers that I thought everyone might recognize include Pantera, Medtronic, Bobcat, Toro, Polaris, and Fasenal.
And Ford.
Ford. 95 jobs are anticipated at the Carver facility. So the project location, to get your bearings a bit, we are just north of the Fleet Farm. If you think about this property, it was annexed in with the Fleet Farm property, so currently in city limits. It's currently the blip above 212 where Carver has land use control. So just north of Fleet Farm, west of Jonathan Carver Parkway. So topic number one is rezoning. So the property is currently zoned ag, which is the default zoning that's given to property that is newly annexed into the city of Carver.
So anytime you're annexed in, it automatically comes in as agriculture?
It does, until a project is identified. So if you think about recent residential projects that we've done, we've also taken this step. So they come in as ag, a project is identified, and then we think through the rezoning. So tonight, the rezoning is to consider going from agriculture to industrial for Lakeview Industries. So I know that we are all pretty well-versed in the comprehensive plan, so how do these two things relate to each other? Thinking through the 2030 comprehensive plan, which is the adopted plan we're operating under today, the property is guided for commercial or industrial. And working through the 2040 comprehensive plan or design Carver, the designation has stayed consistent. So we were looking for either a commercial or an industrial user on the site through both the 2030 and 2040 comprehensive plans. So how does that play in with the zoning? So if you think about a project, it needs to not only meet the guidance of the comprehensive plan, but also one of our zoning districts to be considered. So this project is asking for rezoning straight to the industrial district, so no planned commercial district overlay, just straight industrial. So looking into our city code, permitted uses within the industrial district, Lakeview checks several of the boxes of A, which are the permitted uses, so thinking fabricating, assembly, processing, not live animals, production, packaging, or componing of materials, goods, and products. So Lakeview pretty quickly checks the boxes on A of our industrial district. So working hand-in-hand together, the comprehensive plan and the industrial district, again, the fabricating, assembly, processing, et cetera, together kind of make the perfect equation for a project similar to Lakeview. So it meets the guidance of the comprehensive plan, which sets what the zoning generally should be, and then Lakeview does meet the industrial district of our adopted city So that is land use review number one. Number two that we're asking you to review tonight is the preliminary plat.
Can I just back up?
Yeah.
Can we ask, see if there's any questions on number one?
Sure.
Anybody have any questions moving forward, or moving backward towards what we just talked about? Yeah, thank you.
Sure. So in the preliminary plat process, we get detailed review of things like site boundaries, property lines, easements, utilities, site access, drainage, typical things that happen with how a site lays out and what it looks like at the time of construction. So thinking about the project tonight that we're asking you to consider, it's plating of Block 1 and Lot 1. So it's the property that is directly along Levi Griffin Road. So the northern chunk of the property is not to be developed at this time. The red dash line serves a general idea of where the two lots split. So the first phase of construction is only on the southern portion of the lot, north to be developed at a future date. Here is a site plan that takes away some of those detailed preliminary plat drawings, so you get a good feel of what the site looks like. So you'll see that there is direct access off Commerce Drive, and then two accesses off Levi Griffin Road. So Levi Griffin is a collector road, so on collector roads, we typically try to limit the number of accesses to allow traffic to continue to flow pretty freely. So this is anticipated to be a pretty high-traffic street. So limiting the accesses to two with a direct access off Commerce Drive accomplishes the goal of keeping the collector as a street that can handle large traffic volumes. So here's the pretty technical document of the preliminary plat. You see Block 1 and Lot 1 identified with quite a bit more detail than Outlot A. So again, we're just considering Block 1, Lot 1 tonight. Thinking a little bit about how this sits and where it is in relation to other projects, so the city of Carver doesn't have a ton of property north of Highway 212, but it is anticipated with the 2040 comprehensive plan that that largely will be one of our growth areas. So thinking through how this will fall with property owners to the north, which is largely rural, single-family development, we asked Bolton and Menk to put together a figure using LiDAR data to determine what it might look like for people on Creekeridge Lane in relation to the project. So you'll see, this is largely elevation-based, so Creekeridge Lane sits significantly lower than the Lakeview project. And as this sits today, it's not anticipated that the residents of Creekeridge Lane will be able to see Lakeview Industries' building when fully constructed.
Won't be able to see it.
Will not, correct. So here are the updated renderings. So the top is if you were standing on top of the Fleet Farm. The middle is traveling west down Levi Griffin Road. So you'll see a heavy use of glass on the corner, so that will largely be the office location. So thinking about some of the admin staff, project engineers, their offices are likely to be located there if there are visitors to the site. That gives a pretty clear indication of where that front door is. And then the rear, if you were standing at the water tower, so largely truck bays in the back, but a good rendering of what the rear of the building will look like. So something that's included with the preliminary plat application is a landscape plan. So you'll see that Lakeview Industries is providing really heavy landscaping along the foundation of the building, so it'll break up sometimes what can feel like an industrial or an office user, to give it a little bit softer of a feel with foundation-level plantings. The existing trees that are along Levi Griffin Road today will hopefully be maintained through construction, if not, they will be replaced. So it'll continue to look the same way with mature trees at full buildup, both on the side of Fleet Farm and the Lakeview site. So again, tonight, we are considering rezoning and the preliminary plat of Block 1, Lot 1 for Lakeview Industries. There are two proposed motions, one related to rezoning, the second preliminary plat, so you will need to go through two motions. I will open it up for questions, comments.
Uh, open it up for comments or questions? I have one question. Did I interrupt you, I thought? Okay. Is that the color scheme? The blues and the... I like that color scheme. That's my only question.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 15-2018, rezoning property from agriculture to industrial for development of Lakeview Industries.
A motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Open it up for discussion. All right, no further discussion. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 157-2018, approving preliminary plat for Lakeview Industries.
A motion by Councilmember Johnson that dropped her water. Thank God the lid was on.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mock. I'll open that up for discussion. Kind of in a way, I can say, welcome aboard now. Is that cool? No, not yet. Okay.
One more step.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome in a minute. Let's move on to the purchase agreement for 926th Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
This is an exciting step in the process for 926th Street that we have seen as a concept plan by...
I'm excited about you guys too. Sorry.
So the council's seen a concept plan of Trident's project called Carver Ridge, so that's a new name if you need to get something to stick in your head, Carver Ridge. Carver Ridge. Um, it's an anticipated, uh, senior facility for memory care and assisted living, seventy units. Carver Ridge, yes. So, uh, at the time of concept, it was referred to as Sunny Ridge. And we talked it through with the fire department and having someone call and say, I'm at Sunny Ridge posed some confusion if you're in the neighborhood or the facility. If you have strong feelings, I think the development team would maybe entertain any of your ideas.
I'll start that.
I'm just thinking there's so many Carver stuff, but whatever, let's go.
So tonight we're considering a purchase agreement. So the city currently owns the property. It was acquired in twenty fifteen for redevelopment. This was the site that we saw a few different options for development. Uh, moving forward, initially it was Shingabee and then the project was assigned to Trident. So again, it's seventy units, a mix of assisted living and memory care. Brent mentioned in the work session, but the property was originally acquired through a council approved transfer of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the water utility fund. The sale price of three hundred and thirty dollars in the purchase agreement will refund that transfer.
Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we, we knew what you meant.
Thank you.
I was waiting to see who said it. Three hundred and thirty bucks will pay that back.
Tonight we are just considering the purchase agreement. I do anticipate that the rezoning preliminary plat and final plat will be before the council incoming meetings, but tonight is just the purchase agreement.
All right, any, uh, sorry, are you done?
I am, thank you.
Um, any questions for Erin? And entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to adopt resolution one sixty-one dash eighteen entered into a purchase agreement related to the sale of nine twenty-sixth Street West.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
Seconded by Hank. Uh, any further discussion? I'm assuming you guys are still okay with all this? Henceforth, you're here. Uh, there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratu- we're excited to have you. Can I, can I?
No.
All right, we're moving forward to, uh, nine point six deed infrastructure grant application for Commerce Drive. Ms. Smith. I still like you guys, whether they let me say that or not. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
So tonight, when we were talking through the Lakeview Industries site, we talked often of Commerce Drive. So this deed, um, the innovative business development infrastructure application is related to the construction of Commerce Drive. So a little bit of background about that pro- program. Local governmental units are eligible to apply. The project must be publicly owned, which Commerce Drive will be, and it has to be related to the development of a project. So deed has identified projects should target manufacturing, technology, warehousing and distribution, research and development, industrial, office, et cetera. So Lakeview Industries does hit that criteria as well, making it an eligible project for the grant. So it's based on a competitive statewide basis and the grant cannot exceed more than fifty percent of project costs. So there is a resolution before the council tonight that will allow the city clerk and mayor to execute the required agreement for construction and implementation. But a little bit of detail about what that means for us. So the estimated con- construction costs of Commerce Drive are right around two million dollars. I could go into that, but I'm struggling with numbers tonight. So the deed infrastructure grant can cover fifty percent of that. The local match for the project can, can come through the tax increment financing or TIF dollars. So marrying the two together, the deed grant and the TIF makes up the two million dollars for the construction of Commerce Drive. So thinking about where that is on the preliminary plat that we just reviewed, it's the eastern access point. So that will handle most of the truck traffic for Lakeview. So it'll get trucks off Levi Griffin Road as soon as possible to get them into the Lakeview site to move interior and then out back onto Levi Griffin. So it creates a nice truck loop for them and provides direct access. It's also anticipated that Commerce Drive will be used for a variety of projects, both north and east of the site. So thinking about some of the properties just east, they're really challenging for access directly off Jonathan Carver Parkway. So the construction of Commerce Drive, we believe will spur some more development north of Highway two twelve because they'll have this designated access of Commerce Drive.
So it's a huge selling point.
Yes.
It helps Lakeview and it helps us.
It does. So there is a resolution, again, it's authorizing the city clerk and mayor to execute the agreement for the deed grant application.
Any questions? Hit it.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution fifteen, or one fifty-eight dash eighteen authorizing the city clerk and mayor to execute the required agreements related to the deed infrastructure for Commerce Drive.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Uh, any further discussion? Good work.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are now moving on to, oh, Steinman. Nine point eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
Paul Steinman and my colleague Tom Denaway. He was really fast last time, Paul. And accurate and well spoken.
That's why I wanted to be here today.
Well done.
What does TIF stand for?
Uh, Mayor and Council, so this evening, um, the resolution related to this TIF district is, uh, that you're considering is to approve the development district and, and TIF District one dash nine. Recalling that you held a public hearing on this, on this, uh, project on the TIF district on the fourth of September. And we didn't take any action that evening, but you opened the public hearing, took public comment and closed the public hearing. So tonight we'll just, uh, provide a really brief overview of that district plan and project once again. And there's a resolution associated with that and then the development agreement components, uh, Tom will take. So TIF District one dash nine is this proj- this, uh, geographic area. It's related to Lakeview Industries. The developer is proposing, uh, the new industrial manufacturing warehouse building on this site. The first phase to be a hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred square feet. And the first phase will be initiated yet this year and completed one hundred percent in twenty nineteen. The preliminary development assumptions are what we have in the TIF plan and relate directly to the TIF budget, which is on the next page. So two hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet of development to be constructed in two phases. Uh, seventy dollar per square foot market value assumption, which was affirmed, uh, by the county assessor. And a small one point five percent market value inflation assumption as well. And the city has the ability to retain nine, uh, ten percent of the increment generated to pay administrative costs related to tax increment. Related to the district. And the eligible tax rate, this will remain the same through the life of the district, is one twenty-two point nine six five. This is the budget for expenses. Uh, the public road, site improvements prep, other eligible improvements, about one point four million. Interest payments of about four hundred and twenty thousand and the ten percent equals about two hundred thousand in administrative expenses totaling two million nineteen thousand. And our tax increment revenue estimated at two million nineteen thousand. And I'll let Tom discuss the development here.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. Uh, yeah, the budget, as Paul mentioned, for revenues and expenses is what's described in the TIF plan. And it's what creates the overall authority for the city council to enter into future obligations within the TIF district. Uh, it's, those are budgetary numbers, uh, for purposes of creating budget authority. The application of that authority would come with the adoption of a development agreement. So before you tonight, it's the proposed development agreement, uh, with Lakeview Industries. And there's two obligations that would be proposed for the TIF district. The first would be the issuance of a tax increment revenue bond that would be used, uh, to fund the construction or the portion of the construction of Commerce Drive that was not funded through the grant application or the grant award. Uh, as mentioned previously, the total cost of the road is approximately one million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars as preliminarily estimated. Obviously that'll be subject to future, uh, final bidding numbers. Uh, the TIF would be used to fund, uh, half that amount at nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-five with the remaining funded through the, through the deed grant. Uh, the second potential use of tax increment revenue within the district would be to reimburse, uh, the developer or Lakeview Industries for set improvement costs of up to a hundred thousand dollars. Along with, uh, four percent interest on the, on the incurring of those expenses. The reimbursement of that amount would, would be subject to the availability of tax increment revenue. So the waterfall of the use of tax increment revenues would be first, the debt service on the bonds. Following that would be the city's ten percent retainage for administrative expenses. And then the amount that would be remaining would be el- would be eligible to be used for repaying that up to a hundred thousand dollars in set improvement costs. Uh, as part of the development agreement, the developer has, or Lakeview Industries has agreed to commence construction on the project and have it completed by the end of twenty nineteen. Uh, amongst other things, and they've also agreed to set a minimum, a minimum market value for the site of eleven million five hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. The importance of that minimum market value for the site is that helps provide a level of stability to the future TIF revenue projections. Obviously those revenue projections are subject to future value. Uh, so that helps to set one of the assumptions or one of the, one of the facts on which those revenue projections will be based. Because that future TIF revenue, revenue will be used for funding debt service, it's nice to have a level of certainty as it relates to one of the, one of the portions of the TIF equation. And that's the minimum market value. So as part of the agreement, that, that, uh, that minimum market value agreement will be filed, uh, with the county assessor and that'll be the minimum value for the property. It could be higher as future values or future market value growth occurs, but at least we know we have a baseline there. And with that, uh, well, I guess we'll stand for questions. The next steps for you, if you choose, is, uh, there's one, one resolution in front of you that would be first to adopt the resolution, or that resolution, if you choose to adopt, it would be approving the tax increment financing plan for TIF District number one dash nine. And would also modify the city's development District number one to include the area that was recently annexed. Uh, the second resolution in front of you that you would also be able to take action on, if you so choose, is the approval of the development agreement, uh, or, and the resol- by adopting the resolution authorizing that agreement.
All right. Questions, comments? That's what I thought.
Can I make a motion?
Please do.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one fifty-nine dash eighteen approving the modification to the development program for development District number one and establishing tax increment financing, economic development District number one dash nine within development District number one. And approving the tax increment financing plan therefore.
It's a motion, motion by Councilmember Monroe, who took, took the long one. Seconded by Councilmember Hank. Open it up for discussion, comments, questions? Uh, Mr. Harris, I'm assuming that you're, um, aware of this language and that you're comfortable with everything that we're doing? Yes?
Yes, although I think it's important for the council to realize that your TIF development agreements are drafted by Mary Ipple, your bond counsel. But I've looked at it.
But I, you would also look and say, hey, do not do that. Yeah, okay, good. It's my way of saying I really appreciate your input, so thanks for throwing us all under the bus for that one. Um, any other discussion or comments? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one sixty dash eighteen authorizing the execution of a development agreement.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Mock. We'll open that up for discussion. Dealer? Uh, there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now you can.
No, I can't. Brent keeps giving me the, hey, don't do it. Mary? Yes, yes, Mr. Merrick.
Mayor and Council, considering the actions taken by the council tonight, we'd like to request the council schedule a special council meeting on Friday, November ninth at eight AM to consider the final plat application for Lakeview Industries.
Got it.
When?
Eight AM on Friday. I, uh, I sent back that I cannot, I can't get there till about eight, eight fifteen.
I'm available the entire day, so whatever time works for everyone else is fine with me.
Eight AM Friday. Got it.
Mike can't be there till eight thirty.
I'll be there at, well, yeah, I, we have, it's my, one of my last mayor's meetings tonight. It's in Norwood Young America, starts at seven, so.
Do you want us to start it at eight thirty?
Fine.
Is that okay?
That works for me.
All right.
Eight thirty.
Is that okay with you guys?
I'd rather start it at seven.
Yeah, me.
I would, I would not prefer that time.
Six forty.
Six o'clock.
Oh, my gosh.
Five twenty. I'm out. Um, so we have the special city council meeting on Friday. We changed that to eight thirty, is that okay?
Yep, could we get a motion to that effect, please?
Make a mo- does he have to do it? No, I can do it, can't I? I'll make a motion that we hold a special council meeting on Fri- this coming Friday at eight thirty in the morning.
To discuss.
To discuss.
The fight of plat application for Lakeview Industries.
Yep, that's what I thought I said.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe and Merrick.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Hank. Uh, there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See you Friday. Thank, gentlemen, thank you. You guys, and I do want to commend you. You guys have made a, uh, confusing process. More simple. Um, I almost said simple, but it's not simple, but you guys have done a very nice job with that and it's very much appreciated. All right, we are now to communications. Monroe.
Nothing.
Johnson.
Tomorrow's election day. If you've not done so already, please vote.
Well, yeah, tomorrow's election day.
Tomorrow's election day?
It is election day, you're correct.
Thing going on.
Usually I know when election day is.
Yeah, we have, I'm just pulling up. So out at Sticks Tavern, the Lions are hosting their Sunday brunch on November eleventh from nine AM until one PM. So please head out there. It's a nice fundraiser for the Lions Club and the city of Carver.
Yeah, and, um, anybody here who doesn't have a ticket, I think I have some in my purse if you want to buy one.
Feel like that's taking advantage of the situation.
It's for a good cause.
Done, brothers.
I would also like to mention, um, that veterans are free. So if you are a veteran and have served our country, please feel free to stop out at Sticks Tavern for a free Sunday brunch.
Hank?
Nope.
Merrick? Erin?
We are holding a special planning commission meeting this Thursday to consider Lakeview's final plat before your special council meeting on Friday. The meeting will be six thirty here. So special planning commission meeting next week. We'll have parks on Wednesday and planning commission Thursday. So planning commission will be, meet both special this week and regular next week.
Are you're salary, right?
I am.
Okay, so no overtime. Outstanding. Uh, Sunz Ayden?
Yes, thank you, Ma- Mayor. Um, I actually gave each of you a handout, reminding you of the canvassing, the election votes next Tuesday. Who, it will be at five thirty.
You get a meeting and you get a meet.
Ah! Okay. Wild game. We'll talk. We'll talk. Uh, Larry, anything? Dan, you want to introduce yourself? New guy? Yeah, get after it, brother. Welcome aboard, by the way.
Yeah, Dan Lannister, city engineer, welcome.
No, well, thanks, we've been here before, but, I mean.
You're catching me on the spot here.
Yeah, yeah, you were.
Pleasure to be here and, uh, look forward to serving you.
Do you want to tell the, everybody on camera what you said about Craig Schmidt earlier?
No.
No.
Do you want me to make a motion to adjourn?
Brian, anything?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Mock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Motion carries.